All right. I'd like to call the board meeting to order at 5:02. Let's see. So we're going to do public comment. But just so everybody knows, the only item on the agenda tonight is the building renovation project. So I'm open to adding more public comment at the end if we don't want to take it all up at the beginning before, like, the board has kind of substantively talked about what we're here to talk about. So anyway, we will, let's open public comment for right now at 5:02. And let's stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And it's so great to have all of you here. I'm Jennifer Scrufford, Chair of the Board, and I think a lot of you are on the subcommittee. We haven't officially met, but really appreciate your time. I know this is not an easy project, so appreciate the time you're taking in the community. So it looks like we're just going to start with new business with the building committee update. Paul, do you feel comfortable if I hand it over to you?
I think so. I prepared a statement, so I don't meander, okay?
Okay.
And so I want to read this and then go from there.
Okay.
That's it. And then a lot of this is for the people at home and anybody in the audience, okay? So with a $15 million reduced budget recently set and a limited scope, Banwell decided to step back from the SMS project. The subcommittee is now recommending changing the process as outlined in a document sent to the board several days ago for review. Now, if the board has no questions on that, in a moment, I'm going to ask Madam Chair to move for the board to vote to allow the subcommittee, the building subcommittee, to go to RFP for a pre-development or pre-construction manager. However, first, I want to be clear on some things with the RFP. We're not hiring anyone. We're not spending any money. We are at the beginning of a process that can be modified if it is so determined. And I want to repeat that. It can be modified. We are merely going to RFP to find acceptable pre-development managers, interview them, and then bring them back to the board with the subcommittee's recommendations for a primary and a secondary. Now, as a perspective to this whole thing, finding an acceptable pre-development manager who confirms, after he goes through the building and confirms our scope, and then obtains the best costs on each of the parts of the scope, are not guaranteed to happen in sufficient time for a bond, even under ideal circumstances. If we fail to vote tonight, the immediate effect is weeks of delays, and a March bond vote, in my opinion, will be all but impossible. The current scope is a compromise. It replaces critical infrastructure systems like the HVAC. It adds 10,000 square feet of educational or other space. It improves safety, and quite possibly, if we have a shrewd pre-construction or pre-development manager, increases allows us to increase the size of the cafeteria. Plus, there are a few other items thrown in. And all for a cost that the subcommittee believes is highly likely to pass a town bond vote. And that's the $64,000 question. If the town is going to invest in the school, the board should also ask our educators to provide objective, measurable, and quantifiable improvements in education outcomes for the investment. And this can be discussed in more detail later. If getting to a bond vote for even this limited scope is not possible, my personal, this is my personal view and opinion, my personal plan B would be to stop the expansion effort permanently and bond sufficient funds to replace the HVAC systems only, which is about $2 million. They are in immediate need of being replaced. They're at end of life. We would also, in my opinion, we would also request the town to substantially increase the maintenance fund, in my view, to about $200,000 annually, and repair other aspects of the school piecemeal over the years as funds become available. While not ideal for special needs, I see this scheme as a viable option even now. Challenging problems require out-of-the-box solutions. Therefore, I would also like to explore the feasibility of moving 5th grade to unused space at CMS, which I hear anecdotally exists. The objection that I have and everybody else will have, I'm sure, is the children are too young to go there. You put in safeguards to keep them separated. In 2026, teacher contracts are renegotiated. It is my opinion taxpayers will not want to increase teacher pay. That, on average, is already at the high end of the New Hampshire Town pay scale and at the same time agree to a $15 million bond, it'll probably be more than because of inflation, to increase the size of the school. The charter schools are negotiating for a building in the SAU 16 area. Once found, they renovate and open quickly. There is no tuition for charter schools. The new Newton Charter School that just opened took almost half their enrollment, or 75 students, from the town of Newton. The parents of 41 SMS children looked at Newton, but most, not all, ultimately decided against it due to the travel time. I don't need to spell out the potential impact to SMS if a charter school opens within a reasonable commute to Stratum in one to two years. So Madam Chair, I call for a vote to allow the subcommittee to go to RFP, granting me the authority to approve any revisions to the RFP the subcommittee negotiates with legal and then post it ASAP. And at that point, if anybody has any questions in the process, which I sent out, well, was sent out several days ago, open it for discussion.
So I hear your motion. Do I have a second and then we can have a conversation?
A second.
Okay. Thank you, Eric. So now we can go to discussion on the motion. So thank you, Paul. Appreciate that. Does anybody have any questions or comments for Paul?
I don't really have any questions. I reviewed the documents. I think I'm generally in favor of this. It sounds like what we're voting on is really just to go out to RFP. And so to me, that seems like the most reasonable next step, especially with the guideline amounts that we have and the direction we're moving in. So I'm in support.
Sophie, I knew, I know you were on the committee. Do you have anything you want to add?
Yeah, I would just add a couple of things. One, I just want to thank Paul. I can't tell you guys how much time he's putting into this and how seriously he's taking this. Between individual calls, you know, he's really putting in the time that I don't have capacity to put in right now, and I don't think very many of us do have capacity to do that. So just want to thank Paul, first and foremost, for all of the hard work he's put into this. Secondly, want to thank our committee, because our subcommittee has a lot of incredibly talented and smart people who are in the industry, who know what they're talking about. And so they've kind of been helping us and helping Paul lead the way of, like, what we should be doing, why. And so I think that that's ultimately going to save the taxpayers millions, millions of dollars. So I think that that's definitely, yeah, just worth noting and is the reason why we're moving forward with this. We don't, you know, as we heard from the town, they're not interested in passing a $55 million new renovation. That's off the table. Like, we don't have, if we want anything at all, we have to come down and price considerably. And it doesn't seem like Banwell is able to do that. And our subcommittee thinks we can move forward with this in a reasonable way, going through with this different direction. The other thing I want to note is that I'm very interested and concerned about the academic needs of this renovation and how, you know, the Banwell documents kind of showed, really, like, refiguring a lot of where things are placed. And so just acknowledging that, you know, the academic needs piece is something that I'm really concerned about, and I think that that will be kind of a second step after we figure out the scope and the RFP. Then we'll really dive into the academic needs and how we can make it work, given what we feel like we can pass with the town. So in my opinion, this is the best plan to move forward, to actually get something passed, period, with a town, and then to do so in the most cost-effective way. And then ultimately, we'll figure out how to make this work with academic needs as best as possible. So that's my two cents.
Can I follow on to that?
Sure.
To follow on to what Sophie said, I was really struck by the effort and the work and the requirements of the special needs department in the school. Really struck by that. And overriding everything for me is finding more room for special needs. Now, I'm not going to get involved in what goes where, okay? You're the expert on that, Kate. I'm not. But I know you need more square feet. You need more square feet. And the best that we can come up with is this, this 10,000 square feet. You move stuff around. It's not ideal. We all know it's not ideal. You move stuff around and you make it work as best you can. But 10,000 square feet is like 3,000, how's, 3,000, 2, 3, 3,000 square foot homes, okay? That gives you flexibility. Okay? So I'm proud of that. I'm proud that this does that. And then, as I said, I know I got a real appreciation for how much the cafeteria is used, okay? And if we've looked at these numbers, the numbers that we have here, it even includes, it includes insurance, it includes bonding and all of that. And as I said, if we have a shrewd pre-construction manager that goes out and gets three bids for the major areas and really gets sharp prices, we, the addition that you want for the caf, even by Banwell's numbers, is only 1.2 million, only. It's 1.2 million. We might actually have enough to do that. And nothing would make me happier than to see this school get the increase to the cafeteria. So I'm really rather excited about it, because we're really, we have experts here that know how to look at these numbers and get the best possible value for the school and for the town. So I think we can, it's a compromise in all respects, but I'm excited about it, and I hope we go forward with it. Thank you.
Eric?
I was supportive, so I seconded it. But Paul, what's the motion that's on the table? Can you restate crisply and succinctly? Because I think we're talking about what we think could happen, but tonight we're talking about what?
Right. The motion is simply this, to, for the board to agree to allow the subcommittee to go to RFP to find an appropriate pre-construction or pre-development manager. And we will then come back to the board with our number one choice and our number two choice and tell the board why. And then the board, I think at that point, the board chooses from number one or number two, or maybe, you know, okay, which one do you want, that type of thing.
But did it also sound like you were asking for authority?
Yes. And the reason is because otherwise, we have to have another meeting again, okay? And we, at the, at the risk of sounding dramatic, you know, we're past counting months or weeks. You know, we're kind, we're down to counting days. We need to move, okay? I do not, I prefer not to have to wait for another board meeting. I want to be able to do that. And I'm not going to do it myself. I'm going to do it in conjunction with the subcommittee and legal and hammer out the RFP and get it posted. So someone's got to have the authority to do that. I'd say it's me.
So we don't have a draft of that back from legal, or did they have concerns with it?
They went through.
Okay.
Yep. They went through. I shared that with Paul yesterday, because I got it back yesterday.
Okay.
So they gave a lot of feedback on that RFP. Paul's going to digest it. So it's in a pretty good spot of where it's at.
Okay.
So it just needs, I think, a little clarity of what comes out of this meeting today. That might need some modifications for that. And then the other part, just as you're looking through in Paul's plan, for the board to just consider, I know you put in there, you know, $15,000 to $25,000 for that fee for that pre-construction manager.
Yeah.
Just be cognizant of where you want to take that, because we do not have money in this year's budget to do that. We've been paying EEI and Banwell out of that pot that was the contract we have that is no longer in effect and has been used up. So I would just put that out there. And then the only other thing that I would look at is, we just need a couple of things to tweak in the plan by legal requirements of what we would need to do to get to that bond vote. But I can work with you on that, because there has to be a special meeting when you are going to bond something with the public as a private public meeting. So otherwise, those are the only tweaks that I would.
Right. Nothing in what I'm, what we're doing right now is a bond.
Nope.
Yeah. Okay. Good. No, that's not, that's.
Yeah. And so where would that money come out of then?
So you have your, your building trust fund, which you've used before for this type of work. You could pay for it out of your general budget at this point. And then when we get into June, like we've done in the past, if we're really tight with our budget, then you could take it and you could replace it at it from your trust fund. So.
Really for the fund balance?
Yeah.
But we're not talking about appropriating anything in your motion. This is just for, to go to the RFP.
It's just to go to RFP and then come back with our recommendation. And at that point, the board makes the decision to hire, and we've given you a recommendation on what that, the amount of money is that we would spend when hiring.
I just don't want to put a RFP out without having an idea where that's a significant amount of money, where that would come from.
Yeah. So, I mean, the RFP can say, you know, I'm not an expert in RFPs in this, in this sense. Do it in the private sector. But the RFP can say, it's expected that, you know, this is a $15,000 contract. I'm using that term loosely, whatever you call it, contract, with a maximum cap of 25. You could, I think you could put that right on there. Maybe you don't. But that's what we're, that's what the subcommittee is telling the board we would spend.
Right. Yeah. I know we're not talking about, like, the bigger project, but because we're basically, we're saying goodbye to Banwell and EEI, and we're going on this new path. So that's where it feels like we're kind of deciding the future of the project of it tonight.
I think it's already been decided, frankly. I think it's been decided. And it's a very, it's a very exciting change, in my opinion, in my opinion. I'm confident.
So I have a few questions, but did you want to keep going?
No. Go ahead. Silas, go ahead.
So I just had a few questions about, like, this list. So, you know, I hear you talking cafeteria and, so is this list ever, did anybody, like, did Banwell ever look at this list and say, this is a coherent list of things we could add? Because it seems like one thing would affect another thing, right? That was the big thing with Banwell. It's like, you're going to do this, then we guys should do this, and.
You're talking about 1 through 7?
I'm talking about on this list here.
Oh, okay. All right. So that list, that list was developed as an example list by the subcommittee, and it uses numbers that come from both Banwell and ourselves, okay? So is it a comprehensive list? No. Let me say it another way. Does this get us a new school? Absolutely not, okay? It is, it is put together as those items that are at the top of the hit parade, things we need to look at, and some other things like the softets, okay? So no, Banwell, Banwell doesn't necessarily endorse, nor do they, do they not endorse that list. They backed away from the project because they felt that what we want to do is only a partial solution to what the school needs, and they just felt that wasn't their forte.
Right. And then I guess, so we hired this manager for $25,000 for the next six months, but then this person stays on, still at that rate of $25,000 every six months.
No, that isn't necessarily true, okay? He stays on in another capacity. He is not the general contractor. He is not the architect, okay? But now, I'm going to put this out to, out there to the subcommittee. As I understand it, the pre-construction manager then coordinates for us between the company that we hired to construct the addition and the architect, which we have to hire in both cases. Do I have that right?
They could play that role.
They could play that role.
It'd be up to the boards.
Okay.
Whether they wanted an ongoing service for them. They could cut them off at the pre-development stage, looking at your scope and looking at the estimated cost by blocking several years through. You could cut them off at any time, choose another one, or continue with them. But that would be the, that would be the board's choice.
Does that answer your question?
Yes. But I mean, you're going to spend all this time bringing this person up to speed, right? And they're kind of tied to the project.
That's correct.
Yeah. With the board, if you're on the subcommittee, do you mind just introducing yourself, just so I recognize everyone?
Subcommittee members.
If you could do it at the mic, it would be preferable, because we're recording.
My name is Ryan Houghton. I work for Dowling Corporation. We're a local mechanical contractor, so here on behalf of HVAC advisement.
Thank you.
Mike Welty, I'm on the Stratum Energy Commission.
Nice to meet you.
Dan Crowe. I run Crowe Construction right here in town. I'm a native of Stratum, and I've built many projects for the town through this process. One thing I want to just, can we make public comments while we're here?
Um, I guess it is still public comment.
You're, okay. You're open to public comments, right?
Yeah, sure.
Before your vote. To your point, if we can hire on, let's say, a professional estimator, as we call, a CM, that person can also roll into the project if you choose. You can maintain that firm, I would say, not so much a person, but a firm can stay with you and do, you know, do the project. You can still put it out to bid. But what we need is accurate numbers, because Banwell has numbers from their history. But when you hire your construction managers or firms, the history is different than an architect's history. It's actual history. Well, the architect's history is other projects' histories, and it's different than the actual contractors.
Okay.
And that's, you know, to Banwell's point, they did the best job they could with what information they have. But as we drill down through it, we're going to get more accurate information. That's what Paul's trying to get at.
Yeah. Thank you. That's a, that's a great point. And to that point, as an example, we've used this a number of times amongst ourselves. Banwell had, I want to say the number was 2.7 million for the HVAC, H, heating, AC, right, and ventilation. Ryan, who does this for a living in commercial buildings, went through the whole thing, the whole, he went through the building, he looked at the Banwell scope for that portion of it, and I think you came up with, like, 1.8. I think that is, those were the numbers, if I remember, like, $900,000 less, if I remember correctly. Okay? And maybe, and I don't know, maybe I'm off by a little bit, but not by much, okay? That's, that's one of the largest differences that we found, okay? But there are other ones, too.
So that's a good example of what we're trying to do. I also have a second, a request. I'd like to know what our contract was with Banwell. Did we, is the contract fulfilled? And did, are they paid in full, or are they stepping out and there's money left on the table for them?
They are paid in full.
Is it public knowledge of what that?
I can pull, I have all of the contracts, all the information. I can definitely bring that to.
I'm requesting that, please.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. You know, and Jennifer, to your point, because you had asked me this before, did we waste that money? No. I don't believe we wasted that money. We learned a great deal. They were of great value. And also, on the Zoom call with them, they offered to give us all of their, right, Chris? They offered to give us all of their backup. I asked Chris to get that. Now, I asked them for their CAD files. I don't know if the CAD files are included, but all of their, all of the numbers that support the top level that we all saw in PowerPoints, they were willing to give us, and whatever other documents. And I don't really know what I'm talking about when I say other documents. But if there's drawings or CADs or anything else that supported what they showed the board in PowerPoints, they said that they were willing to give it to us, and they were actually, Mike Davis said he was willing to give us advice as well. So we, we left that meeting, which I specifically said it, we don't want to burn any bridges here, okay? We're just, we just are in a position where we have to cut this way back for the taxpayers. And they understood. They understood completely.
Are there's anybody else on the committee?
My name is Luke Pickett, and I'm on the, on the building committee as well, and lived in Stratum for, since 2001, and I have my own real estate consulting practice.
All right. Great. Sorry.
Oh, no. No, I was just going to make sure everybody, because if anybody does want to add anything, we're still running.
Okay. Yeah. I think I just, I really want to know what Kate's thinking, because when I look at this list and I think about, you know, when the teachers did their brainstorming and how often you've talked to everybody, I also don't want to put you on the spot, but I would definitely invite you to speak up and share thoughts about, you know, sort of what is missing from this list, if you feel comfortable.
I feel like the project has evolved from 2019 in a pretty significant way in a really rapid pace since, like, March. And I think ultimately, COVID hit in the middle of the process, so I think it slowed it down in a way we weren't anticipating. And then I think we were all trying to play catch up, right? So I think that it was sort of a, a response to things that we had no control over. And I think additionally, we have had three different real boards in that time.
Yeah.
And so the prerogative of the board has been very different over time. And I've shared this with Paul in meetings and Sophie as well. And I think my feeling is EEI and Banwell were responding to that.
Yeah.
And I think they were doing a really nice job of saying, well, this is what the, this group of five wanted, and this group of five wants something very different. And I appreciated working with them, because I think they had to be incredibly flexible and responsive with that. And so when I think about all the work that, like, the staff put in and their, and their feedback, and they looked at multiple drawings, and I think, again, that was aligned with what a different board's prerogative. And so I think they haven't had the time to digest it through this board's prerogative. And I think this board's prerogative is very, very different. And I think the staff understands that, so our goals for the renovation project will look very different, and that's okay. We just have to be really, just shift our lens and think differently about it. And I think that's kind of what we do every day, all day. So it's just a matter of being able to do that now. I hear the compromise piece. I'm very comfortable with that, because this hasn't been my project. This has not been something I, like, this is a Kate Lucas thing. This is a Stratum School Board thing.
Yeah.
So I'm really comfortable thinking differently and compromising about it. And my hope would be that we can do that in a way that puts students at the center of that decision. And so there are things that I think people propose when they don't understand education, and I get their mindset. Of course, they're like, well, this would save this. Yes, but would also put all of our specialized students in an annex, and that's absolutely inappropriate. But I don't expect people to know that. So I've been, I've been leaving our building committee meetings feeling good about the conversation, the back and forth about, hey, I thought of this idea, and here's why that wouldn't work from an educational perspective.
Yeah.
Or, oh, I didn't think about it from a Realtor or a environmental engineering perspective. And so I feel like those conversations have been really good. And I'm curious how the rest of it's going to play out.
Can I comment on, on that? I read all of the, all of the lists from the teachers, okay? And, you know, some of them would be costly, but a lot of them aren't. A lot of them really aren't. And one of the first things I would do after we figure out if we can increase the size of the caf is to go through those lists and say, okay, so we went to a bond, not to exceed 15 million, okay? And we get this really shrewd pre-construction manager that comes back and says, you know what? We can do everything on here for 13.6. Hey, Kate, you got another million something. Let's go take a look at the list and see what we can put in. That may not be a real business way of saying it, but that's what I, huh?
Definitely. I said, hey, school board, you have 1.4 million. What would you like?
That's what, that's what I would do. That's exactly what I would do. I would say, okay, let's go see if there's something else that we can satisfy from an educational perspective.
Yeah. Yeah. So I guess I just have a couple of things I wanted to. So I guess I just have a couple of things I wanted to say, just based on sort of your opening statement. You know, I think you talked a lot about the town not being willing to vote on the budget or this ballot measure. And I think we don't know that for sure, right? We have a lot, you know, I have a kid in the school. We have, this school is really important to us. And I think it needs to be, you know, well-funded, well-maintained. We have had meetings where people have expressed concern. I think these meetings are at 5 o'clock, 6 o'clock on a Wednesday. I mean, I'm supposed to be in four places right now. I'm sure everybody else is. It's very hard for parents of young kids to come. And so I think that that is a disservice and something that we need to think about as we roll this out and explain it. So I don't feel comfortable saying that the town is 100% voting it down. Obviously, I understood at our budget meeting in March. I understand at some of these public meetings that there is concern. But I just don't feel comfortable making a blanket statement that the town would vote it down. I think also, you know, you talked about a charter school. Couple of years ago, two charter schools started over the summer. It was really exciting. We watched them build and, you know, we had good friends that, that went to those charter schools and, you know, they, they didn't last. And I think SMS is, you know, the center of our community. And I don't think you can kind of throw around this threat of a charter school, right? It's important for us to maintain this public school of SMS. And three, the other thing I really, you know, we talk about March and I like that idea of a March ballot. But I do think it's so important for us to get out to the town and talk, right? It's already the end of September. So I don't want to minimize our outreach to the public, right? Whether it's 15 million or 5 million or 30 million, those are big numbers. And I want to make sure that we have like a very strong public presence and that people feel heard and that we're seen as we talk about this. So I just kind of want to make those three points to what you were saying. Does anybody else have anything else?
By the way, I appreciate those comments because you've got the longevity and the history of the town and I don't.
No, thanks. Yeah. So I think when we talk about your motion, it does look like we're headed to the RFP route. I would say, you know, I'd be very interested in reading drafts of the RFP. Is it, is there a way for us to look and approve drafts without meeting?
Yeah, I can send it to you and you can give comments to me.
Would that be okay to, that we would share some of the authority for edits to the?
Well, okay, so how would that work? Because, yeah, sure. I mean, sending the RFP, so we have, we, the, the subcommittee recommended an RFP for a pre-construction manager that was actually pretty much, almost verbatim, that came off of the Guilford website. They have an RFP out now for a pre-construction manager.
That's great.
And I haven't even looked at the changes that were suggested by, is that legal? Okay? But there's a lot of redlining in it. Okay? So I haven't even had a chance to look at it yet. So, okay, I look at it and then you look at it and Eric looks at it and so on. And then what? In, in October, we get together or in September 25th, our next meeting or the meeting in October, we get together and we discuss it and we hash out the changes we want to make and so on and so forth? Is that what you're saying?
No, I guess that's what I was asking, Chris. Because I know for other boards I've been, we can vote via email. Can we do that?
Not if you're going to make a motion until it be at a public meeting. It can't be done by a, by a.
Yeah.
The whole, the whole reason for this
Yeah.
was to get to the point where we don't have to meet to move forward to the RFP.
I understand.
I mean, I don't have any problem with you seeing the RFP or the changes or anything like that. I'm not sure that the subcommittee would agree with the changes that came back with legal. That's why I said, I, I believe, let me just say, I think that there would be, there will be negotiations between the subcommittee and legal before we get to a final, a final RFP. And it's got to be fast. This, this can't take weeks.
Yeah. I just don't feel comfortable giving that authority. I want to see it, especially because legal came back with comments.
Okay?
Yeah.
So how do you want that to work?
Well, can't you send that, I mean, we have a meeting next week.
Yeah.
Just add it to the meeting next week, the agenda.
Yeah. It's, what is it, seven pages long? Or maybe a lot, maybe a lot was cut.
A letter that explains the outline of the changes and then the RFP is, I think, five pages long.
Yeah.
Yeah. I would just like to read it.
Do you want, do you want, you want it beforehand, I would think, right?
Yeah, I'd love it before and then, I think what we can do tonight is we're saying like, we're going to go ahead on this new path, right? We've talked about it. But yeah, I would love to just see the RFP.
Okay, so we can't go to RFP until after our next meeting of the 25th? Is that what you're saying?
Well, it sounds like there's work to be done anyway.
That's why I said, I want to, I want to do that. I said to Chris before the meeting, I want to start that tomorrow, okay? With the subcommittee, I want to get that all done and then, today, today's Tuesday, right? Ideally, I'd like to get this thing posted Thursday. I know it sounds impossibly fast as, as it relates to the way, you know, boards work and all that. But you wait a couple more weeks and, you know.
I have, I have, can I ask a, can I ask a process question?
Yeah.
You said between Tuesday and Thursday with the, the subcommittee, right? That's what you just said? Is that, is there a meeting schedule that I don't know about?
No.
Okay. Because I'm like, I'm on the subcommittee and hold on, I don't even know what you're talking about. So you, so you mean, you would talk individually with members of the subcommittee and work on the revisions in the draft?
Right.
Okay, all right, Paul, I just want to make sure.
Okay. Let me, let me be clear. I talk with the members of the subcommittee that have the experience in this area.
Okay.
Okay? Ryan, Luke and the others. Okay? They've done this.
I'm just asking for process because I was making sure I was, if I'm the subcommittee, I would want to.
I'm not, I am not writing or making changes to the RFP. I don't have that experience, but they do.
Okay.
I'm trying to move this forward as quickly as possible with the goal of getting to a bond vote that does the things here. So certainly, if you want to see it all and it adds a couple of weeks to it, it adds a couple of weeks to it. It just makes it that much more, I said this to you a while ago, it just makes it that much more difficult to get there.
Yeah.
We have to, we have to find these people. Okay? In other words, we have to put the RFP out. They have to respond, okay? And I think we're, correct me if I'm wrong, I think our subcommittee, they know who some of these are. They're going to reach out to them and say, hey, there's an RFP, you know, sitting on, you know, SMS. Why don't you read it and see if you want to respond to it? But we got to get responses. And then what's to say that any, what's, they could have questions. What's to say that any of them are available in the timeframe that we meet, we need? You know, these are all things that are, these are all challenges that we could face.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, I understand the point of this meeting. I just thought I was going to see it. I haven't seen it now. Chris is saying there's legal. I would like to just see it a little bit. And whether, can I just see it and, I mean, can I just be a member of the subcommittee for two days or something?
I could share with the entire board tonight before we leave. So you can have the letter and the RFP, what came back.
Yeah. If you want to see it.
There's a motion though on the table.
Yeah.
We either need to vote on it or amend it.
I guess, does anybody else feel like that you need to see the RFP? Or is there any other conversation about that?
I think, I think the only way that, I'm okay with going, I'm, I'm okay voting yes on, on the motion as it stands. A potential option could be to amend it that it's approved by the subcommittee. If you don't want that to rest with one person.
It would be, okay, amend it to approve by the, because the subcommittee is the ones that's going to really write it.
Right.
Yeah. I used, I used me just as an entity to change it to be approved by the subcommittee.
Yeah.
Same key question. Does that require a meeting of the building subcommittee? I think that's what.
Curious too, if it's approved by the subcommittee, we all get together.
Yes, it would approve. We'd need to have a subcommittee meeting to have them there in public comment.
Yes.
Because you're going to be allocating monies typically in that RFP, up to 25 grand. That's a responsibility of the board. The subcommittee is acting as the board for this work.
Wait, 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 wait.
But no funds are being appropriated.
No, no, no. No, no, it's, it's.
In your RFP or your plan, you have allocation up to $25,000. So you are allocating money at some point for this construction manager. So if you're.
What if you take, what if you take that out of the RFP?
You're still going to need to pay for, for work that they're going to be done.
To be sure, okay?
But there's ways of writing an RFP where you don't, you're not committing to paying. It's not a contract. RFPs are not contracts.
Right.
They're an advertisement for services.
Request for proposal.
Legal needs to, to put a statement in there that says that response to this RFP and award of this RFP does not mean that it's an award of contract or verbal selection or however you want to do it. There's a way that legal can probably.
Yeah, what I'd recommend is whatever you decide, I'll, I'll set you up with legal because I sent it to him based on the information that was given to me. So that's what they went through. If there's a change in that, I can give that to him. And whoever you elect to have that conversation with the attorney, now again, you're on, you're on attorney terms, so I can't guarantee that they're going to be available tomorrow.
Right. Yeah, well, I only, I only got it back.
RFP to be seen by this board of what's coming out because it's.
It took a week. I got it back at 5 o'clock last night, right? I didn't get a chance to look at it with other things that I had committed. I'm trying to figure out a way that we can vote to go forward so that we can take action and get the RFP posted. Okay? If the board needs to see it, it delays it. If the subcommittee, if the subcommittee are the ones that approve it and then the subcommittee needs to meet, what, how many people do we have in the subcommittee? Like eight? Okay? You know, trying to get eight people together? You know, you're talking a week or longer to get them all together. It's the same delay. Okay?
May I make a suggestion? What's your, what's your board meeting?
Wednesday, the 25th, 6 o'clock.
If I may make a suggestion, if you vote to move forward, allow the board members to see everything? You, you coordinate it and if there are objections by, Jennifer wants to see it clearly.
Yep.
You're nervous. If, if, if Jennifer has a strong objection, then you move it to the agenda for your board meeting next week.
Yeah.
And, and then you vote on it then, right? So there's a delay of a week is your downside. But if everything goes well and she sees it and says it all looks fine and you can post it on Thursday, she just tells you, hey, I got a chance to see it. It looks fine. Go ahead.
That's what I'm saying. We already have a meeting on Wednesday, so.
Is that?
You have a meeting on, today, today's, you have a meeting on Wednesday, the 25th. But wait, Luke is saying if you, let's say that you read this tonight and you're good with it, do we still have to wait until next Wednesday to say the board is good with it? Or can you just, I don't know, communicate?
Well, it depends how we amend the motion.
And you would have to amend that. It's not a subcommittee decision that you're in there or ready to do that because we haven't scheduled a meeting.
Yeah, I know, but I'm not.
I just want to make sure we're clear. I want to make sure I'm clear.
But I'm not, but I'm, okay, but I'm telling the board that I'm not going to do that. I'm, you know, it's going to be a subcommittee cooperative decision.
Yeah.
Okay? I don't know how to do it. I'm telling you my goal. I want to get it posted as early as possible. Just let's please try to do it that way.
Yeah. Okay, so I think what I would, I would amend the motion then to say that the, that the RFP gets distributed to board members tonight with the attorney comments. And then, um, yeah, and then does the, um, I guess I would just feel more comfortable if we approved it Wednesday at the regular meeting.
On the 25th.
Just one note.
Yeah.
If two people agree and two people don't agree, I'm not here.
Yeah.
Say that again, please?
I'm not here next Wednesday.
Yeah.
That's a problem.
Well, it might not be.
It's a potential problem.
I'm, like you. I don't have the expertise either. I just, I do have a lot to read and I do want to just read it. I've read many RFPs and I would just love to, I just want to read it before it goes out there with the Stratum name on it.
It is, it is what it is. I've, I've made my views clear. If, if, if it's got to wait until next week and then if there are two that agree and two don't, then it waits until the following month. It just is what it is.
Yeah. Yeah. Are you okay with that?
Yeah, I guess for me, like, I guess my comment about that is, like, next week's meeting, I am not an expert in any of this. So I'm really reliant on the subcommittee and legal. So if it does get sent out, I, I don't think that I'll be able to add too much to the conversation about amending it or things like that. So from my point of view, like, I am comfortable leaving that to Paul and the subcommittee and kind of moving forward to his point, you know, about timeliness and things like that. And I know the meeting is next week, but obviously we're already like behind. So that's my comment on that.
Yeah.
So I totally understand where you're coming from, especially with your background.
Can I ask this question? Can we go forward with the motion as is? Agree on it? You get to look at, so I'm good with it. Eric's good with it. Tanya's good with it. Sophie hasn't said anything, but I, she's good with it. So we got four out of five that are good with it, but we certainly respect the, the wishes of the chair. So can we go forward and vote on it and then you look at it? And if you have a problem with it, we stop.
Yeah. But once again, the motion is with the subcommittee support, right?
Yeah, right.
So are you going to have a vote from the subcommittee? That's, it's still that issue.
I hadn't planned on that. I had planned on talking with the experts, okay? And making sure that they look at the RFP and say it does what they need it to do, get that approved by legal and post it.
Yeah. So that's okay.
Is there, is there a difference between a vote and them approving it where everybody has, the subcommittee has a chance to participate, weigh in, including legal? And then it comes back in a refined, final version?
That's the process sticky part. That's the process sticky part. If you're gonna put it to a Subcommittee, the whole Subcommittee's gonna give input and vote on it. That needs to be done publicly at a public, public meeting.
Then don't do that. Make it me with the understanding that you know I'm gonna do that, but make it me.
My suggestion would be that Paul, I could send it out to the Board and to the Subcommittee. Any comments the Subcommittee has goes back to the Building Chair, Chair, Paul. He could bring that to our next meeting on the 25th with any comments and additions, and you make a formal motion of that's the RFP you want to go through. Or Paul communicates with our Attorney, Diane Gero, to make those additions so it can be posted immediately. That way, you've covered that Subcommittee's able to look at and provide him just individual feedback to that, and he brings it to this Board for the vote because of that RFP.
I think that makes me a lot more comfortable. I know we met tonight, but we met with the idea that we would have the RFP, which we don't, which I understand.
One more thing too, is if you don't like it, why don't you put it to a vote to revoke it? Right, put something out there. If you don't like it, you can, you can take it off.
Yeah.
All right, we can always resend an RFP. Can't we?
You can, I just, anytime we bring the Attorney on to look at stuff, that's...
They're gonna charge.
Right, so I would not be advocating to put something that we might not just revoke, so... So that's, that's my recommendation.
I think what I'm thinking, if there's something glaring there that you absolutely hate liability-wise or you hate for some other reason, then it would behoove us all to remove that, even if it costs us 400 bucks to have a lawyer review it again.
Just so I understand, so what you're saying is Paul goes ahead, posts it maybe on Thursday? That's...
Or whatever.
Yeah. So Paul on his own without Subcommittee.
Probably as, as the motion was presented.
Yeah.
Can I get a, can you restate this? Can you restate it for me, how it was stated? Because I thought it said, yeah?
That the Subcommittee would get an RFP for an appropriate construction manager.
Thank you. So you'd have, unless we have a meeting, you'd have to redo it, correct? I'm asking.
Yeah.
Process-wise. You'd have to amend it to say, Paul, not the Building Committee, unless we're gonna schedule a meeting Wednesday or Thursday. That's all I'm asking.
Yeah.
I don't want this to come back and haunt us in six months. Like, I want to make sure we're following process. If, if the vote is to say the Subcommittee, then we need to meet tomorrow or Thursday. Or you amend it to say Paul. I'm indifferent to either one. I just want to make sure I'm clear.
That's a good point.
And Paul can still find, reach out to expertise of the Subcommittee to get feedback for that, but you're putting it as, for the Chair of that Building Committee, which would, which would be more solid and seamless in the process.
Absolutely. I, I urge the Board to make it me. You know I'm gonna talk to the experts. You get, I say you, Jennifer, the Chair gets to look at it immediately, and if there are any issues, the Chair says, stop.
Yeah.
Okay, and we stop. But if not...
Sounds like there's two pages of issues. Didn't you say there's two pages in notes?
There was a letter from the Attorney explaining what she did and going through that process that I will attach to that. And then there's, there is a lot of redlining, because the original RFP was written for a town, not for a school, so it's a little bit different. So a lot of changes were made more for a public school rather than a town which they're working with.
And, and so the, the letter from the Attorney is, that's the separate document? Right. And I said to Chris just before the meeting that I've only, I only had a chance to review that real, just for a few seconds, and I believe that there are misunderstandings from the Attorney, or we didn't communicate with the Attorney accurately what we intend to do.
Okay.
Okay?
Can I ask you a question, Chris? We actually received it, Dan received it from Guilford Broadcast email, which is where I understand it is. Did you get the same, did you get that, or am I getting it from somewhere else? That Guilford RFP, do you remember?
Yeah, I got that.
If it's the same one I'm thinking about, their scope in their RFP, their scope in the RFP involved actual construction as well. So it was a pre-development and then a construction period. Did they eliminate all that construction period?
No, they just made it more about school rather than a municipality because it was for Public Works in Guilford, so that was the difference.
So I did see that from somewhere. I saw the Guilford. So if they didn't, when you see that, Jennifer?
Yeah.
I'm guessing some of the comments from legal are gonna pertain to a part of the scope that is not being contemplated.
Yeah.
So just be, because it was fairly lengthy about, about construction period, as I recall. And that, that doesn't pertain to what you, what you're doing. So that would be, either the Attorney pulled it out, or, or you guys...
Okay.
And then the letter, and the letter from the Attorney, as I said, I think there's miscommunications in there. And, you know, I would want to go back and forth a little bit within discussions with the Attorney and the Subcommittee to say, okay, does, do we have a right understanding in here? And then give that to you, so to speak. But, so when you look at the, you look at the letter from the Attorney, you're gonna go, whoa! You know, oh my, oh my God!
Yeah.
You know?
Okay, so in the interest of time, let's, Paul, could you restate your motion?
Sure, sure. How do I restate it?
I don't know, just what you already said.
What you already said, but take away the Subcommittee.
But do what?
Remove the Subcommittee.
Okay. Madam Chair, I call for a vote to allow the Subcommittee to go to RFP granting me the authority to approve any revisions to the RFP in negotiations with legal, and then post ASAP.
Okay.
I took out, I took out Subcommittee the second time.
All right, that sounds great. So do I have a second to the revised motion?
Second.
Any discussion on the revised motion?
I think it sounds good. I'm good with that.
Sophie? Charlie? Kate, Chris, anything else we should be thinking about? Okay. Okay. Okay, so all in favor of the motion as stated allowing Paul as Building Chair to talk to the Subcommittee and then approve it for posting as soon as possible?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Sophie? All right, so we got four. Any opposed? I'm gonna be opposed. Any abstentions?